Actually is a little bit encouraging because if you do the cash to debt ratio, they're actually in the positive. By a little over $300,000. Now, we understand and you will understand that that is kind of an average of all the systems. They're all individual accounts, but you know, it does show that we're in a good place compared to where we were. In 2024, we did repay a little over $1.3 million back to the general fund from individual ditch accounts, which was a very good thing. And so a breakdown of our current debt is that in all loans and interest, the multi-year assessments, meaning the improvements and separable maintenance, out of that 1.557 million, we have about $751,000 in multi-year assessments, and we have a little over $800,000 of short-term debt. And the short-term debt, I would consider that, you know, those are just kind of ditch funds that are insufficient due to paying damages for redetermination of benefits proceedings, ditches that we could not assess enough due to their their benefit values of the systems, ditches that just didn't have enough money in their account to to cover repair expenses and were given loans from the general fund. I'm hopeful that in this calendar year, out of that $800,000 that we will repay more than 70% of that $800,000, so we will be, you know, I don't want to say square, but we will be close. And you know, the thing to realize in these ditch funds is that things are volatile and things happen slow. You know, you have large projects that come up or redeterminations that are very expensive and it can add a tremendous amount of debt to a ditch system, an individual ditch system in a short period of time. You know, but what we are working at is knowing that those are coming and trying to have a a plan approach to that when we know that it's coming. Next year in 2026, we do have some larger expenses coming and JD10 Steel Company, we have a redetermination of benefits that is in the redetermination process right now, and there's going to be $185,000 worth of damages coming into that system. And that system is about five miles of open ditch and that's full of trees and that needs a lot of attention. And so, long story short, by the time we get set done with the JD10 Steel, you know, there's probably going to be a $450,000 invoice or cost coming, you know, between the redetermination and the repairs of JD10. So these are things that we need to plan for, things that we need to structure that debt going forward because you know, roughly a half a million dollars in the small water shadows, probably more than most of those beneficiaries want to bear on the calendar year. So we may have to look at some constructive finance. I can try and form a multi-year assessment on that. JD5, its neighbor to the south, is going to be about $125,000 in damages and cost of redetermination. County Ditch 27, which we've all talked about a little bit, let's say mainly a tile system just northeast of Richland, is a candidate for total reconstruction of the tile system. You know, that's looking to be a $1.2 million project. And we've talked about the possibilities of bonding for that project for some long-term finance options for beneficiaries of that system. We have County Ditch number eight, which is down south in Waldorf. And it does a starts just south of Waldorf and it snakes through the countryside over to Madawan and over to well, over to Madawan, east of Madawan. And the plan going forward with that one is through study assessment every year, you know, the plan would be to, you know, expend about $100,000 a year on that system and just take it in incremental projects and work our way through the system. It has done approve a significant repair for that ditch system this spring. But we still have a lot of work to do on that system. And as you all know, when I was hired, we have a lot of ambitions of getting out and getting things cleaned up from the country. We're trying to clean up and, you know, make these projects predictable before we just suddenly try and do all the disrepairing in the country. So those are kind of some of the highlights of where we're at, what is coming. Last year in 2025, we had a total assessment sum of 1.358 million, just about 1.359 million. You know, we are still in the midst of trying to shore up a lot of that debt. This year for 2026, it's looking to be just over 900,000, 905,000 in assessments for 2026. So I feel from a financial standpoint, we're really headed in the right direction. We're getting the debt cleaned up. We are getting some projects done in the countryside, probably not at the rate that we really like to see, but we're making forward progress and our assessments are declining.
So go ahead. I'll interrupt, but I got a few questions. When, what is in our audit state, you know, that audit statement we get every year? It must not be taking the total balance. It's just taking the outstanding debt. I couldn't find my 2025 one, but you know, that I thought that showed like over a million in deficit in the audit, but.
I'll see if I can pull up last year's.
Is this, do you recall five years ago what this total balance would have read?
The loan loans and trusts?
Yeah, like it right now, it's 326,000 in the black, you know?
Well, so bear in mind, this sheet did not exist as that, you know, but I do recall. From an audit standpoint, four or five years ago, we would have been carrying 1.6 to 1.7 million in deficit.
You think that is after, after taking in the accounts that are in black against the debt?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's what the general fund was carrying from an audit standard in terms of outstanding liability that we had not yet received.
So we went from that to a positive 326,000?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's bear in mind too, and I'm not exactly sure of the criteria that they're using in that audit, but you know, a couple of years ago, the total sum of the debt was more like 3 million. You know, it was far greater than what it is today. You know, we have been working with property and election services to shore up or find a better way to track the the loans to the ditch systems from the general fund. You know, there was some of them out there kind of in paper form and in different Excel spreadsheets and in, if you recall, last year, the year before, there were a few loans out there that were discovered or got a process that really known to us, I guess, from just looking through the ditch book. So, you know, the criteria that they're using for that, I guess, I'm not 100% sure of. I'm just looking at what is available to us. So I'm sure we're looking at two different sets of numbers, but I'm looking at, you know, the pure loan values and the cash on hand. So I'm not.
How is JD18? Are you still working with Minda and doing a lot of dealing with that, that side?
County Ditch 18, I'm sorry, County Ditch, yep. Yes, we're still kind of in the works of County Ditch 18, working with the city of Wasika and Minda, and that was part of the reason. What I should point out is on the spreadsheet, if you see columns that are highlighted yellow, these are all systems that are in the process of redetermination. And we put County Ditch 18 to redetermination again to make sure that all of the benefits and damages are accurate, you know, in anticipation of this project and repair coming. I would assume, I've been talking with Nathan Lilly, the city engineer, and he's been in contact with Minda and we're trying to work on that collaborative repair between the city of Wasika and the and the Drainage Authority, because as of right now, you know, there is a multitude, there's three or four pipes coming underneath Highway 13. And we are working to try and consolidate them into one county tile well that is sized to accommodate all of its use. And so the work in the background has been trying to divvy up who's responsibility or what cost percentage of that project would belong to each party. And it gets a little bit confusing because the city of Wasika is the beneficiary for all of the individual properties within the city of Wasika. And so when a redetermination is done, the viewers will go back and they'll say there is X amount of acres within the city of Wasika and the benefit to those properties is X amount of dollars. And so Wasika County bills the city of Wasika for the assessments and the city of Wasika has to double or divvy out those assessments to the affected individuals. And so the city of Wasika, you know, has interest from a road authority standpoint and also the beneficiary standpoint. And so we're working through a number of things there so that they don't feel like they're getting overexposed, you know, because they're receiving a bill for everyone, for the city of Wasika individually, Minda receives assessment for their road authority portion of it, and then they have, you know, obligations to fix the road as well. And so it gets kind of confusing when you throw everything into a pot and say, how are we going to pay for this? Because they're paying for repairs to the road already and they're turning around paying assessments. And then when we ask them to contribute additionally, they say, well, we're already paying assessments to County Ditch number 18. So the talks over the last year have been a year and a half about who is going to pay for what, you know, because it is going to be a very expensive repair and that solely went to the beneficiaries of County Ditch 18. We would all be kind of a lot of phone calls, I don't want to see happen, and we want to make sure that it's equitable for everyone.
But you're working in the right direction?
We're working in the right direction, and I would assume that that is probably going to be a 2027 construction project. And we're going to keep our fingers crossed that makes up that line.
That's why I was just going to wonder, how's that going to hold up?
That's a good question.
And if we get heavy rains over the next year, will that, you think that'll hold it or not?
Well, right now, the problem with it is the integrity of the tile. It's tracked and it's de-farming and, you know, it can last for 10 years or it can last for 10 minutes, you know, and that's just a guess. And if it doesn't make it that long, then obviously we're going to have to go out and just do some dency repair to fix the problem and patch things up and forward and deal with it, but you know, it's, we're hoping for the best and we're trying to hope to get it laid out and predictable before we attack it. But if we have to react to it, then that's what we have to do.
I'm concerned with pushing all that. For Minda, changes people so often. The person that has a different thought, I'm just going to make sure that we're staying on track and taking care of this.
It is, you know, and, and the good thing is, is that most of the engineers that we're dealing with in that project have been there for some time and we don't foresee them going anywhere. Some of the supporting staff to that, the people who deal on grants and grant, because they're looking for great opportunities. Because there is a desire to extend the bike trail to go past there. So they're trying to work that under the equation as well to extend that culvert a little bit further so that it would accommodate a bike trail to go along Highway 13 so that is part of it. And so they're looking and trying to tie some trail funds into that to help with the repairs of of the crossing itself. So moving in the right direction. I know that that's a long ways out and I'm not really that patient of a person, but sometimes that's just as fast as things move.
Well, I heard you. Chris, did we, on JD24, we had those discrepancies with the landlord. Should we absorb that in 24 or 25?
On JD5?
24 was steel. Well, JD5 was the one that was in the zone?
Okay, so, okay. JD5, it is the move to reverse JD5 from the general fund for those expenditures. There is some cleanup work, so they've done made whole for the work that was done on the private ditch system. That money was put into their account in 25. But what we have to yet do is we have to have a joint drainage authority meeting with Steel Company and the affected commissioners of both JD5 and JD10 because there was an invoice from JD5 that belongs to JD10 and that is simply a we have all the logistics of it figured out for the reconciliation part. We just need to have a joint drainage authority meeting so that you as commissioners can understand what needs to be moved, why, and then after that, it's kind of simple journal entry. But that will be upcoming before the end of the year here.
Okay. And that'll be the, the full board on both sides?
No, just the respective commissioners for those two joints. And both of them, you know, will be, the Wasika County is a majority in both JD5 and JD10. And so it'll be our three commissioners and their two, so.
Okay. Can you explain the, you told us what the yellow means. What, what's the green and the blue? And then there's one red on that JD24.
So the blue is more or less just a shading mechanism so that when you look across the lines, you can either follow a green line or a white line because if they're all white, I have trouble going from left to right.
Also, it is just every other, isn't it?
Yep, every other. And then the, the blue line in the center is County Ditch 31. And if you guys recall, we worked through that issue a couple of years ago, County Ditch 31 did an improvement and they did not break out the separable maintenance with the improvement. And so the blue line is for us to just kind of track that there is another category in there for the improvement and also separable maintenance. And the, on JD24, the red box around that $9 million number is a notation for us because when they did the redetermination of benefits for JD24, there is some federally owned property in JD24 and the federal government does not pay ditch assessments. They're exempt from ditch assessments. And they will spend an enormous amount of money to avoid paying a $4 assessment. So what has happened there, and that is a note for us, that we had to change the total benefit value of the system as it was deemed by the viewers. We had to adjust it to remove the benefits to that federally owned property. So it's just a note for us when we're when we're looking at the toilet.
So state owned land will be, this is a state owned land, there is ditch assessments federally.
And then on JD51, the last line, the red notation down there on 2020 and 2024 is after the redetermination of benefits on JD51, Blue Earth. Blue Earth. Forgot, I guess. There's no better choice of words to pay the damages to the beneficiaries of JD51 in Blue Earth County. And so that is a note for us to to know that we have a bill coming from JD, from Blue Earth County for our portion of the damages that will be paid in JD51. Wasika County paid buffer strips and I shouldn't make that a little simpler. I always use the term damages, but damages in the ditch world are typically for buffer strips or for right-of-way. And Blue Earth County does not get their buffer strips paid. And we obviously have to pay a portion of that bill as a joint drainage system. And so it was a reminder for us when we are proposing an assessment that we know that we have a invoice coming at the end of the year for $50,000 from Blue Earth County for damages in Blue Earth County.
Go ahead. Chris, while it's still fresh and, let's back up to that JD24, it just shot 20,000 acres. 20,000 acres. And the fans pay no watershed benefits. Who covers that?
It's absorbed by the rest of the system, for lack of better terms.
Just, just that system or all of that system?
If, if that property is in JD24 and the assessment is put out to JD24, they are relieved of their responsibility to JD24.
It's tough and that's just, it is tough. It's a big system, thank goodness, but there's a lot of federal land.
Well, or.
No, is the moon in marsh? Is that?
No, that's state. That is state.
Yeah, okay.
So that does up until the redetermination of benefits, that was 2022. Yeah, Moon and Marsh in JD24, when JD24 was constructed as a watershed project, the agreement was that the DNR did not pay any assessments to JD24 for undisclosed period of time during the redetermination and actually put benefits to the state owned land in JD24, Moon and Marsh, Swan Lake and Steel Company. And so now, after the redetermination, the DNR is paying some benefit, granted it is a pretty nominal amount, but they are contributing. But, you know, the federal government for some of these, I don't remember. They're of federally funded easement program. It's kind of, they're all in like, or the Weber Farm also there.
So the lock-in homes and larger access areas, you know, that's some of that property out there and it's not a great deal of property. So
like I said, there we sent them out in 2024 and we received the first notification from the federal government just stating that they're exempt from drainage assessments on their property and you know, their assessment that calendar year, like $4 or $5 and, you know, they took staff time and postage to send a rebuttal letter to it, which I'm guessing that they had significantly more than $400 spent doing that, but I guess that's the end of it.
So, go ahead. Going through this, I see there's about 11 ditches that will have a higher assessment last year. The rest of them are pretty much staying the same or going down. In your estimation, is there a ditch that you're concerned about hearing from constituents? Like, why are we getting assessed more?
Well, I mean,
I'll be going through each ditch and seeing how much it is per acre. Is there, is there a lot that you're concerned about as far as?
Hearing from people?
Yeah.
All, all of them.
Well, and the, the thing that's encouraging to me is it, it is going down overall.
It's going down overall, but you know, bear in mind that we go through each one of these ditches individually and we take into account, you know, what their cost allocation is to Wasika County for the staff time. We look at what is, you know, the financial balance of their account in general. And, you know, the intent of this is that we attempt to make small incremental assessments to try and build somewhat of a fund balance so that when we get a large repair, it takes some of the shock out of it. You know, if they have $50,000 in their fund and we have a $100,000 project that's half paid for, that means we can greatly reduce the proposed assessment for the next year rather than trying to have to take it all on the calendar year. You know, some of those things that we know are coming in terms of repairs. But we just have to go through each one of them individually and, you know, and I can, you know, if you have questions about specific ones, then I can recall in my notes or my memory, you know, why that percentage went up from last year rather than down or stayed the same. And, you know, that, I'm not saying that it's a perfect system and truth be told, you know, the assessments to all of these systems, you know, probably should be greater than what they are. But, you know, we also recognize that the last three or four years have been tough on everyone, you know, in terms of, you know, what everyone feels is is fair for property taxes. And then you add ditch assessments on top of it and everyone feels burdened by it. And I understand that. But what we are trying to do to help you as a drainage authority is get back into a positive state and back to a place where we are not technically supposed to be placing leans upon property. a positive state and back to a place where we are not technically supposed to be placing leans upon property. You know, the drainage leans, the one oh three E drainage leans are the paramount lean in the state of Minnesota. Meaning that they come before any mortgage or anything else. And, you know, placing them upon properties. People kind of are not used to that and people may not like it if they don't know that it's coming. You know, when we go in, in, in the case of County Ditch Twenty-Seven, when we explain to people that you have a long-term debt coming and you're going to have a lien placed upon your property, you know, to get this financing or this bonding and everyone knows it upfront, it's predictable and everyone is prepared for it. If a county ditch system in general just falls into debt and we can't bring that back within a calendar year, then we go out and we just blank out lien the benefits list of the ditch system. And some people start discovering that they have a lien recorded against their property with a notification. They get kind of excited and that's what we're desperately trying to avoid. You know, a lot of these ditch systems out there, you know, the fund balances in them are nowhere close to what some of their anticipated construction or repair costs are going to be. But it's just trying to keep something in the front. And doing it, you know, part of it is methodical in the sense of dollars and cents and some of it, you know, there is an aspect of what can the beneficiaries afford, you know, that does play somewhat of a role into it. Because we take those phone calls every merchant, we get lots and lots of them, yeah. They're not fun phone calls to have. So, I mean, it's, when we talk about, you know, I like to present it as, well, look, we went down. You know, five hundred thousand dollars in assessments from last year, you know, that's a great thing. That doesn't mean next year we're going to go down more, you know. Depending on what we do in terms of repairs.
Right, you know, given, given no repairs or no other work, I'm going to see it going down, but
Oh, obviously, yes.
But, yeah, you don't know, there's going to be a lot of work to be done, you know.
Well, we know, you know, that there is a monumental amount of work.
And then by the end of twenty twenty-six, we will have gotten through all our redeterminations. And then from there, we want to maintain or, or be better about maintaining our redeterminations than we have been in the past. So do you have an idea, is there a golden number that says, okay, in twenty-five years you should re-determine? Or is there, I would imagine there's other?
Well, I mean, a lot of it is, is to, it's one of the, the benefits and damages of the system. The benefit of the system does not reflect the present day costs, you know, of labor, materials, land values, input cost. And so it's kind of a debatable thing, but it is, you know, when I look at it now, you as a drainage authority are allowed to assess up to twenty percent of the value of the system. When you look at a, the benefit value of a system like GD Twenty-Four that has nine million dollars of benefits, you know, that's a lot of money, you know what I mean? But I don't foresee us assessing twenty percent. And I'm sure in twenty years from now, our dollar is going to look a lot different than it is today. But I hope, you know, that it doesn't look like two million dollars, you know, compared to a hundred thousand today. You know, I mean, in twenty years from now, if we can still assess almost two million dollars in the system in a calendar year. I don't, I don't foresee the need to redetermine in any given number of years. It just has to take all things into consideration. Land values or what repair costs are, what the value of the dollars, inflation. The good news is, is that now that we have done through all of these redeterminations, the damages for the buffer strips have been paid. And those only have to be paid once. And so the next redetermination, it is administrative cost, you know, it is the viewers, the engineer and some staff time. And so, you know, you won't have two hundred thousand dollar redetermination proceedings. You'll have ten thousand dollar redetermination proceedings. County Ditch Eighteen, Commissioner Melbrough was talking about, that was done in two thousand and seven. But, you know, in looking through that watershed map, there were a few things in there that didn't make sense. Some of the land values we felt were pretty low. And there were some question marks about some land use within the city of Wasika. And so the conversation that spurred that is making sure that the Drainage Authority and the city of Wasika were squared on a level playing field. And everyone knows who is responsible for what, you know. So the reason for ordering that redetermination wasn't solely based upon monetary reasons in terms of, you know, that things don't reflect modern day values. There were other aspects to that that spurred that. So it's just part of annually revisiting all these ditches. You know, what the value of the system is, if there's been a lot of ownership change on it, you know, it's a great way to update the ownership of the system, all of the splits that come, you know, within a drainage system. Making sure that the, the benefits reflect what they showed in split systems or split parcels. And it was just a good way to keep on top of it. And it will get more affordable now that all the damages have been paid.
We're sitting better today than, after you took it over like twenty twenty, correct? We've got a better situation than have an idea of how things are going in the right direction.
I hope so. I mean, and I came in March of twenty twenty-two. I, you know, I started contractually working with Russ in twenty twenty-one. At the end of twenty twenty-one, you know, if you go back and you look through your ditch assessments, if you see twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, there's a lot of blank spaces up there. And then in twenty twenty-two, a lot of those lines were filled in from twenty twenty-two to the present. You know, we're making considerably more assessments. And we're spending a lot more time in the public drainage system. You know, that is, I mean, you know, we, we hopefully feel that we're making significant progress in it. But we're also expending a lot more time doing it. Before, you know, if you have limited, limited staff time, there's only so much time to give to it. We're just taking a deeper dive onto it and we're trying to do it differently. Thank you.
So.
Not a question so much as a comment. I, I'm appreciating this work very much. This is just what nobody likes to get assessments. I don't like to get assessments, but the fact is we have a statutory obligation to administer public drainage for our residents. And these ditches and tile systems belong to our residents. We are, we are responsible for maintaining them and and we have put considerably more time in. And this was an investment that this board made in, in trying to get ahead of some of the issues that we saw coming in our public drainage system. This is, this is some of the biggest infrastructure in the county. And it is owned by our residents and, and it's our obligation to, to manage it in a way that it works the way it's supposed to. And so I know when I get calls from folks and they might be worried about assessments or what's happening. Sometimes it's, it's as simple as explaining to them that they don't understand how this all works, that the system is theirs. And we're just making sure it stays in good shape. And they have salmon and they need to show up at those darn meetings so they know what's going on and how it works. And when we get good, good public engagement in those things, usually people go away not necessarily happy about their assessments, but understanding what they're, what, what is happening and why. And what the benefit actually is. And so the work you're doing is good and important. And it's going the right direction and it's a slow process, but keep on going.
Well, you know, in the interest, I think, in our, I guess my view of one oh three E drain, just that most of these systems were put in, you know, from the early nineteen hundreds through the heyday of it was probably in the nineteen sixties. And so there are so many landowners right now who are so far removed from the process. You know, their grandparents pioneered the land, you know, they petitioned, they got the public drainage system put in. They were through all of the petition processes, the meetings, the landowner meetings, the hearings. And so they understood what public drainage was from beginning to end. And then the next generation came along and they heard their parents talking about it. And they had an idea of what it was, not a true understanding of it. Now the next generation after that has inherited it and a lot of them don't know what it truly is and how it works. They know that they have a county tile on their property. They know they have a county ditch. They don't know how it came to be, how it's structured, what the obligations of the Drainage Authority are, you know, how it's paid for. And so, you know, they get a tax statement that has an assessment on it and they say, well, you know, I'm getting charged X amount of dollars and I still have some drawn out spots and I feel what's going on, you know. And so then we back up and we, you know, we sit down with many, many, many people every year. And we kind of go through the ABCs of how a drainage system works and how it is administered, inspected, repaired and paid for. And when they leave, most of them have a very good understanding of how it works. Like you said, they may not all agree with it, but at least they understand. If we can make them understand, you know, then we've done it. Can we make everyone happy? And so it's a debate. Yes, we're probably starting to run a little short on time, but you guys in your packet have the the twenty twenty-six proposed assessments. Is there anything in that list, you know, that you have a specific question to? Um, we all know that the proposed assessments for twenty twenty-six is not inclusive of the redip system that we have. Only the ones that we're going to receive an assessment during that list. So the numbers of ditches are a little bit different. I will just make a note that on County Ditch Twenty-Seven, the one that we were proposing the large scale reconstruction of, we did nothing for an assessment on that one because we felt that next year, we actually go to construct the project. We will figure out the assessment to support the bonding after that. So we made a significant assessment of that system last year based upon anticipating some repairs to it. We don't do the repairs. Everyone asked why. So we're going to give it a break for a year and we will just restructure that assessment. According to the debt service, if the project goes through and if it is bonded for, we will propose assessments to support the debt service to bond.
Okay. Any more questions for Chris? Concerns, complaints?
Thanks, Chris.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Do anything else? Work session here or?
Mr. Chair.
Anything else we'll cover administrative updates?
Yes.
All right, then I will adjourn the work session.
All right, then I will adjourn the work session.
So the chief of and this is the and I am glad I am sorry yes I am I am sorry I am so thanks again I am 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 I
Okay, we will start the meeting with a public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Governor? Here for public comment. Right, bringing it on to presentation, yes, Leota Lind here this morning. Give us some updates on South Country. Good morning.
Well, good morning. Thank you for once again allowing me to appear before you and provide some updates on South Country no alliance. A couple of topics that I've been covering today over the last few years, we've been working on some strategic priorities that were established in like 2022. I'll give you a brief update on where we are at in the court case and then also the financials. So I'll begin with an update on our strategic priorities. I think we've made significant progress on this across multiple fronts. I mean, I dance to the next slide. So our first priority was really to work closely with DHS. We really wanted to solidify the role of county-based purchasing and what the role of county-based purchasing was going to be in the future of Minnesota healthcare programs. Since 2023, we've been engaging regularly with leadership from the Department of Human Services, leadership from AMC, and leadership from all three of the county-based purchasing plans. And the primary focus of this was to work on the design of the Karma model. And Karma is the County Administrator for Rural Medical Assistance. It really was taking the best of what had been happening in county-based purchasing and looking at what opportunities did we have to advance and enhance that. It was really focused on designing that model that would meet the unique needs of rural counties. We had legislative legislative success in both 2024 and 2025 sessions, which resulted in the authorization of both the development and the implementation of the Karma. And that is scheduled to begin in January 27. We believe this really lays the groundwork for increased membership in our plans, greater stability and long-term viability of county-based purchasing. The other thing that is really notable that has come out of this work is the improved relationship that we've seen with the Minnesota Department of Human Services leadership. It has been extremely more positive and more collaborative over the last couple of years. So a very refreshing change from what we dealt with over the last decade. Our second priority was really somewhat similar. It was really to continue our work with educating our legislators and county commissioners about the unique value of county-based purchasing. Over the years, we've hosted some legislative forums on a regional basis. Jeff and I have continued to attend the AMC ledge conference annually and participated in meetings with our legislators, with our counties, trying to reinforce, we are counties. We've also done individual meetings, both up at the Capitol and in the district, and have posted legislatures at our legislators at our office. Again, I believe we've had some tremendous success with this. We have developed targeted communications that we've used in those meetings. And I think the success is again supported by the legislative success that we had with the Karma model. We also were successful in the 2025 session having an exemption of county-based purchasing from the carve-out of the dental benefits from managed care. DHS is moving to a single dental benefit dental benefits administrator statewide that we really believed would have gone backwards for our rural counties and the work that we've done on trying to improve and maintain dental access. Our third priority was really focusing on developing more of a market campaign, marketing campaign, really trying to raise public awareness and community awareness about county-based purchasing as well as with all of our stakeholders, legislators, providers, et cetera. This was started by doing a number of listening sessions with individuals who are enrolled with South Country, working with county staff, gathering information from providers to really kind of develop what our brand and messaging would be. We implemented a multi-pronged media campaign and so unlike what we've done in years past where we did very little kind of marketing and advertising, we started using billboards, radio ads, digital marketing. So in local businesses, restaurants, having information about South Country on those digital boards as well as really increasing our presence on social media. This has been monitored throughout the years annually. The team has refreshed and updated the materials that we're using. And again, we believe this has really been successful and we've really seen increased awareness of South Country among the community, our members and other stakeholders. I've been amazed and other staff have commented on it too, that now in open about the community, people used to be asked, well, where do you work? And they'd say, South Country, and we'd say, well, what is that? What do you do? We are now seeing that people are recognizing the name, recognizing what we are. Our fourth priority was really focused on addressing health-related social needs of our members. We long believed that there's a number of things that impact our members' ability to maintain or improve their health beyond just their hospital and and medical visits. And so again, we've had a history of developing programs that would focus on early intervention, prevention, trying to get ahead of the curve as we address some of these things. We began starting out with really meeting with members, providers, county partners to really determine where those needs were within each of our local communities. And very quickly, it stood out that nutrition and mental health were two of the the biggest and most common priorities within our communities. From that, we developed two new programs. We did a pilot program in this last year called Bright Bikes for Life. I think I talked about that a little in my previous visit, that is really focused on individuals who are prediabetic or diabetic. It was a tailored meal program that started out with providing initially the tailored meals already prepared, stepping down to food boxes that had the ingredients and members could then learn to prepare it themselves. And then ongoing coaching and support for up to a year with registered dietitians and nutrition coaches. So really trying to educate and incorporate lifestyle changes for individuals. That will be ending at the end of the year. We are going to take the data from this past year and take a look at that, see if it achieved the health outcomes that we were hoping it would achieve. And if so, maybe have the opportunity to bring something like this back again in the future. The other thing we did to address the mental health access was contract with Dr. On Demand. We know we would much prefer to have our members be able to see providers face-to-face if that's what they prefer, but sometimes access is just difficult and you can't get an appointment timely enough. So this was a 24/7, 365 virtual platform that members could access for behavioral health and some services. And we also had the opportunity to kind of expand that to address some of the needs that we were seeing and access to urgent care kinds of services. With this, again, we think it's been successful. The Dr. On Demand has been a slower uptake. But we have from the members that have participated in both of these programs, really received positive feedback on the programs and we will need some additional evaluations of those. Our fifth priority is probably where we had more limited success. There long has been data that has looked at the health disparities between urban and rural settings, but it's done on a much broader scale. It includes the commercial insurance market as well as the Medicaid programs. We have always really wanted to focus in on the Medicaid programs and what kinds of disparities in health outcomes were we're seeing between urban and rural. What we found as we did this, we were working with Minnesota Community Measurement to see what data was out there. And what we found is there's a real gap. There is no data source that really can get down to that granularity level to look at the disparities and outcomes between urban and rural and the Medicaid program. I don't think this was a total loss though from this. We really gathered a lot of information of different data sources that are out there. We know what some of those broader health disparities are across all populations. And I think it will build a platform for us as we move forward to continue to look at how we might get them to more of that granularity, but really to help inform us as policy recommendations are made in the future. I am now serving on the Board of Minnesota Community Measurement for a two-year term, so I am taking what opportunities I can there to see if there might be some other opportunities to look at that. So that is our update on our 23 to 25 priorities. We're all being turning our attention now to the next couple of years. And I'll pause there and see if there's any questions.
I know MDH has got a data modernization work group that is up and running right now. I'm on it as a non-technical expert, obviously. And and I'm really interested in how the work of that committee, which has a ton of people who who and good cross-representation for both rural and metro public, local public health folks and MDH experts, how how we might need to understand what you need as we look at what we've got and who should be doing it and how we can improve our data sets holistically from a from a public health perspective. So I want to talk to you sometime about that.
Well, welcome the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so shift now to kind of updates on our legal cases here where we've had an ongoing case against the Department of Human Services. against the Department of Human Services related to the procurement that was done in January of 2022. This was a case that was filed by all three of the county-based purchasing, believing that DHS was instituting a procurement process that was in violation of Minnesota statute 2568.692. This has been going on for a long time and I didn't really realize how long until I put the timeline together. But as you know, it went to district court. It was ruled against the county-based plans in district court. We appealed it. It went to the Court of Appeals in November 2023. The Court of Appeals issued an opinion that was very favorable to the county-based purchasing plans. At that point, DHS and the MCOs that had joined the case with DHS filed a motion for petition of, petition for review with Supreme Court, which was granted in November of 2023. And from that point, we waited and waited and waited and waited for a decision from the Supreme Court. And finally, in August of 2025, right before Labor Day, the court vacated the order dismissing the petition for review, saying that it was improvidently granted. So basically saying, we never should have said that we would review the case in the beginning with, to begin with. So while it was disappointing that it took so long for that to come, it is a win for us in the fact that that does revert to the appellate court's decision then. So wherever at at this point is the appellate court will re, uh, ram it back to district court for the resolution and enforcement of the appellate ruling. A judge was initially assigned, there had to be a new judge. The judge originally heard in district court had unfortunately since passed away. It was assigned and then one of the MCOs challenged the assignment of that judge. So that judge was removed and another judge was subsequently appointed. So we do have a judge, no other plan or DHS has challenged this one, but we know that it likely will not have the first hearing on this until at least into December. Beyond that though, we, we did outreach to DHS and said, you know, we, we would be happy to work with you to look at if we can reach a mutual agreement on what the next steps forward might be that we could be prepared to put in front of a judge. So waiting to hear on some of that. So we'll wait a little longer, but this was a major legal win for county-based purchasing plans.
So when all this transpires, that we get back to single plans in our respective counties, six counties?
Seven.
Seven, eight. You have an estimate of how many members that will increase our overall population?
Yes, I did take a look at our October enrollment and the enrollment in Blue Plus is the other plan that's in all of our companies for that PMAP program. And that's the one that would be most significantly impacted. We still have to work through visual plans. But just for PMAP alone, based on October enrollment, it would be an addition of approximately 6,400 additional members to South Country. So if that were to happen within the next year, I mean, that would be almost a 30% increase. And you know, we don't know when that will happen. It could be, you know, it still could potentially be something in 2026. But for sure, we will see that increase in 2027 because karma is also intended to be a simple plan model. So we know that for sure, within a year, we will see increase in enrollment, but it could occur earlier than that.
And that will be significant, obviously, for the organization, but also, you know, just for administrative costs. Did a Kinev, Kinevic?
Kinevic, Ken, Kinevic.
Drop out of South Country Health Alliance. And we had did a lot of reductions in staff with anticipation that we would have a positive outcome on this. So that we should be almost set. We shouldn't have to add administration with the addition of this membership.
No, we, we have a couple of positions that were vacated that we didn't refill, just given not knowing what was going to be happening. So at that point, we would potentially refill. All right, and next to brief update on the financials. So this is as of August. As of August, we were at a net loss of 3.7 million compared to a budgeted loss that we had of 1.5. As you know, we had significant losses in 2024. Of course, we were seeing those losses continuing to 2025. We did establish what's known as a premium deficiency reserve for 2025. So we, knowing that we were going to experience losses, we set money aside at the end of 2024. So the 3.7 is on top of the PDR. So it's actually greater than that. Our revenues are 9.1 million above budget, which is about 7%. But really, we're seeing just continued high utilization and higher acuity level, higher sickness level of the members that we're serving. And our claims expense have been 12.6 billion above budget, so almost 10% above budget. Our loss ratio was at 98.8% at the end of August. So again, worse than budget and four percentage points higher than the same period last year. We're significantly under budget on our administrative expenses. We do think that will come down a little, but I think we will finish the year with a significant under budget. With the exception of some IT costs, it really isn't any big, one big area. It's just lots of little areas being under budget throughout the year. And I think part of that is just because we were continuing to experience losses, we were just really looking at that. And if it didn't absolutely need to be done, we were doing it. I mean, is higher than we would like it to be, but we knew it would be because of the reduced enrollment. But our capital and surplus is still strong. We're sitting at 36.8 million. Now, what I will say is with the claims expense, we have seen medical claims start to level off over the last couple of months and become a little bit more stable. With dental, we're actually now above budget with that. What's really driving it is our pharmacy costs. We've seen significant increases in pharmacy costs. Much of it related to the new coverage of the GLP-1 drugs for weight loss. These are extremely expensive drugs. They're on the state's preferred drug list. And unfortunately, it's the highest cost ones that are on the state's preferred drug list and we're required to use those. So not a lot that we can influence with that, other than asking DHS what they're going to do to try and mitigate some of these costs. On a positive note, we did have, DHS did do some upward rate adjustments mid-year. Initially, for the first half of 20, or second half of 2025, after continued discussions, they went back to second quarter retroactively and forward. Interestingly, if they would have included the full year, we probably would have been at a breakeven beyond the PDR. On a positive note, also though, they have indicated that there is likely to be another adjustment prior to the end of the year for a second half of 2025 because of some legislative changes that were made and also inpatient, revising the inpatient rates. So it's looking more optimistic. We did just release the September, that will be reviewed with the board on Thursday. And we have, we have closed that gap down to about a 2.4 million loss on a year-to-date. So we're heading in the right direction. Any question? Oh, and for 2026, we have signed contracts with DHS and CMS for the 2026 contract year. These are average kinds of increases across all Medicaid programs of about a 14.3% increase in the rates for 2026. That's really unprecedented. And I don't know that in, in my time with South Country, that I've seen those kinds of rate increases in the past. This is not just South Country, it's not just Minnesota. We're, we're hearing across the nation, just the increased utilization and acuity level of members in Medicare main programs. One thing that the state did do for 2026 is a risk corridor has been put in place for Medicaid products. And while overall, we think that's a, a good thing. With the way it's structured, it's a little bit broader than they've done in the past. It will allow for at least a 3% margin based on our performance. But what it does is protects both sides. So if DHS overshot on the rate increases, it's not going to result in a windfall for the health plans. A portion would be repaid to the state beyond the limits that are set. But it also protects us on the downside that if, if they still haven't done enough and we're still continuing to see losses like we've seen over the last couple of years, it limits our risk as well to that 3%. So overall, I think a positive mood moved. On the Medicare side, also significant increases, 9.2 for senior care complete program, 14.9 for ability care. And again, this is, this is significant as well. We generally see those increases in the 4% to 6% range. So I think again, just an indication of what's happening across the nation in healthcare. Any questions on the financials? My last slide then is just a reminder that we will again be hosting our annual AMC dinner. Just noting the change that we've moved it from Sunday night to Monday evening. So we hope to see whoever's attending the conference. And we welcome you to join us for that dinner and look forward to, I think, a few moments of celebration for some of the positive events that have happened over the last year.
Questions for the, where's that dinner gonna be?
It will be at the hotel that the AMC conference is at. Double Tree Bloomington.
So this has been a odd series of events over the last couple of years. You know, two years ago or three years ago when this all started, we had a very, I would say, relationship with DHS. Just because of the case, that there were some administrative changes up in DHS, which kind of seemed to turn the tide. And that's where we started getting a lot better cooperation. So here we're working collaboratively to, on this karma for two years while we're in a court case against each other.
Yeah.
So it was really kind of an odd situation.
It was.
So I think now that we've got that good relationship going forward and the court case went in our favor, I think things could really turn favorable for the organization. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to number three, approval of the agenda. So anything added or needs on the agenda? Commissioner Crowes?
Uh, no, sir, Mr. Chair.
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Okay. No, sir. Nothing from staff or admin?
No, sir.
Okay, you should be good then on the agenda. If I would look for a motion to approve it, second number. Second, to approve the agenda as presented, discussion, all in favor say aye. And I have a whole, same sign, what you cares. Uh, we will move into ditch authority. Chris Point Engineer C27.
Good morning. Sorry, the long time, I'll see. Appreciate the short break. Something you have in front of you this morning, the first item is a request to adopt findings in order to appoint Jones Hogan Smith, Steve Pinkman, as a engineer for the repairs of County Ditch 27 and Branch 25 of County Ditch 27. This is being done to keep within the 103E point 705 repair proceedings. Repairers want to join us with this stuff. What he would be doing is preparing an engineer's report for the condition, the existing conditions within CD 27, and coming back with a, a list of repair options for that proceeding. So with that, I guess I will take questions and look for a motion to approve the findings and orders, or findings and orders presented to appoint Jones Hogan Smith, Steve Pinkman, as project engineer for County Ditch 27 and Branch 25 of County Ditch 27.
Make that motion that we appoint Jones Hogan Smith, Steve Pinkman, as engineer for CD 27 and 25, Branch 25.
Sir, second?
Second, monitor.
Discussion. Oh, I should find out that this is actually the findings are due call. Yeah, that's. Seems like I had a question. Awesome. Is this? Oh, I know it looks. You televised both these branches, both systems a year ago or whatever. You've been investigating these branches for some time. Does Jones Hogan Smith use some of that for their report?
Overall? They will, they will take a combination of some of the footage that we have of it. Jones Hogan Smith has been out in the field with us over the past year doing some survey. They will just kind of combine information that we as county staff have for them, some of the survey information that they have at this County Ditch 27 and Branch 25. Or, you know, there's a two-folded issue with that. It's the condition of the tire and issues of science in the ground over the top of the tile. So there will be documenting the, the cover issues over the tile and, and working through what it takes to correct that. A lot of the work that they will be presenting to us with assistance of the county staff over the course of last year already. And a lot of the repair suggestions have been completed already. So it's more or less making it official. Just to keep with them, the repair, the steps toward repair proceedings, as it's going to be a large-scale, expensive project. And make sure that we are all in favor of things.
Okay. Okay. It's been a motion to approve the preliminary findings and order and appoint Jones Hogan Smith as engineers. No other discussion. Don't have no role. Like to do that.
Christian Margath?
Yes.
Mr. Millbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Crowsey?
Yes.
Mr. Monter? Yes. Mr. Chris Iverson?
I will abstain.
So a motion carries four zero with one of abstaining.
Thank you. And annual interest review?
Yes. Purpose of this action item is to kind of review the interest rate policy to public drainage systems from the general fund. Number twenty seventh, twenty twenty two Drainage Authority adopted resolution twenty twenty two dash forty two. The resolution includes a policy for setting the annual interest rates for funds loaned to individual drainage systems from other Waseca County funds. This process is executed when the individual accounts become insufficient. Statute one oh three E six point five five. They say this is a revision of what is exist, of an existing policy. And if there are no changes to the policy, look for a motion to set the annual interest rate for year twenty twenty six. Should improve that based upon the policy. It's looking like the interest rate would land back at four percent. Last I checked, the current federal interest rate was three point eight seven. And the policy has a federal frame interest rate plus three percent, which will make it almost seven percent. And so the maximum interest rate according to our policy would be four percent.
We did prove this policy, then it would fall back to six percent.
Correct. If the board fails to set interest rate for the year, it reverts back to statutory six percent. And I guess with the current economic conditions and interest rates, maybe at some point if the board feels so inclined, we can revisit the policy. I guess. So we have the forest.
Okay, so I would look for a motion to approve the interest rate for twenty twenty six according to our policy. So moved by Crowsey. Is there a second?
Second by Walter.
Been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty six interest rate at four percent. According to our County Ditch policy. Is there any other discussion?
Go ahead. I this is part of the balancing act that we do as we have been doing considerably more work in the area of our drainage system and putting more resources there. And and doing more work that costs more money to take better care of the ditches. It, it makes sense. It's a balancing act between then the interest that, that we charge to do that and the, and the additional cost that, that property owners are paying. And I think this is one way that we kind of try to find the right pace and right balance between between what it costs to take care of these ditches and what people can afford and what they want to pay. And, and I think it's good that we review it every year and take a look at it and say, how are we going to do this? What is it going to take to do this? So I appreciate that this is a regular process and that we think about it every year because we still have a lot of work in our ditches, so.
All right. Any other questions, comment, concerns? Discussion? Otherwise, there's been a motion on the floor in a second. So I will call the questions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go CD Resolution twenty twenty five dash forty four, ditch, twenty six ditch assessments.
All right. This is the fun one. So as you all know, we spent some time this morning in the work session and talking about the process of anticipating and proposing drainage assessments for the next calendar year, which would be twenty twenty six. Waseca County Board acting as Drainage Authority reviews proposed ditch assessments prepared annually by drainage staff. We base our proposals on the health of the individual ditch fund, including proposed maintenance, repairs, administrative costs and debt. And before you is a resolution twenty twenty five dash forty four of the proposed for year twenty twenty six ditch assessments. I would look for a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash forty four, twenty twenty six drainage assessments for certification. There are motion or?
Second, Millbrook? Second, to approve the Resolution twenty twenty five dash forty four, twenty six ditch assessments. Is there any discussion? Other questions got answered at the work session? So if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of County Board minutes. We have a pretty good list of them here. Budget work session minutes, August twenty six. Budget work session, September second. Commissioner meeting minutes, September second. Budget work session, September ninth. Budget work session, September sixteen. And meeting minutes on sixth month. So I had a chance to work them over. Don't have any questions or impressions, but the motion is a slight. I'll make that motion, Millbrook, as a second. So there's a second, second by Crowsey. Moved by Commissioner Millbrook, second by Commissioner Crowsey to approve the County Board of Minutes as a slate. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Approval of the bills. Extension of conditional use permit, hundred and twentieth solar and economic development acts of eight. So any questions on that or I'd look for a motion?
I move the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second? Second, Crowsey. Moved by Commissioner Alter, second by Commissioner Crowsey to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we get to the action items. Contract eight one two five zero seven, final acceptance.
You're here every week. You must be doing a lot of work out there. I need to do a lot of work out, I've seen. Um, yeah, this morning, I was looking for acceptance of work and authorization of final payment for a contract awarded to PCI Roads for concrete pavement rehabilitation and replacement, lightweight pavement and some other work on the five miles of County Road three between County Road four and nine. And also almost one mile of new concrete pavement south of nine to Waldorf. That work started in the spring and concluded here late summer. Um, the original contract amount was a little over three point seven million dollars. We did issue a number of contract changes and there's a fairly significant elimination of work. And I don't recall if we talked about this on the road tour, if we were driving the road or not. But the plan was to retrofit the existing pavement with dowel bars, um, both along centerline and the outside built path. Uh, due to the original design of the concrete being thicker on the outside and thinner in the middle, um, we learned quickly from ECI Roads that constructability of retrofit on the centerline where the pavement was thinner is going to create more harm to the road than good, which is what we were trying to do. So we eliminated that portion of work, which was about four hundred and thirty eight thousand dollar deduct from the original contract amount. And then we had some other miscellaneous changes to the contract. But all in all, um, those changes ended up still being negative by a little over four hundred thousand dollars. We did get a little bit more aggressive with our pavement rehab to, to put some of those dollars back into the road that we were going to anyways. And at the conclusion of the contract or at the work, uh, we're at three point five million dollars or roughly ninety four percent of the original contract amount. Uh, we still do old PCI roads, a little bit of retainage at fifty seven thousand, six hundred and forty one dollars and forty seven cents. And we, I split funding for this project at seventy five percent county state construction dollars and twenty five percent off some sales tax. So the question today is to accept the work, um, which was a great project. We're actually going to submit it for a Concrete Paving Association Award. Which I've never done before, is submit some of our work for an award, but, but it went really well. Uh, PCI was a great contract to work with and came on to concrete work out there this year, I think. Stay in a fair chance at receiving an award for the project. Okay, hold it. Yeah. Explain that.
An award. You mean a, a monetary award?
No, a little, I was just a little.
Life and good job.
Yeah. These guys have got a little plaque for naps and maybe so will we. No monetary. Recognition, maybe is how it should be for a, for a project on, you know, meeting all stacks. They recent, received some incentives for quality aggregates and concrete mix, which gives us longer performing, better, better, more durable concrete.
So this award would be beneficial for the contractor, right? I mean, it would be a
Yeah, it's a recognition.
Recognition in their association.
Yep, for a concrete paving association. Yep. So I think I was at requesting acceptance of the work and authorization of the final payment to PCI Roads. And any?
I would look for a motion for the acceptance of the work and final payment. So moved by Crowsey.
Second by Millbrook.
And seconded to accept the work and authorize final payment of fifty seven thousand, six forty one point four seven. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
So thank you. Okay, then we'll look at Resolution twenty twenty five dash forty one, local road improvement program. It's a five.
Yeah, um, so the state of Minnesota is currently soliciting local road improvement program grant applications. Uh, the legislature appropriated forty seven million dollars on this last session in Gilavon's program. Uh, dissimilar to the twenty twenty three solicitation, both Woodville Township and Waseca were worth its dollars. Uh, although this appropriation is more than half less. Uh, well, the twenty twenty three appropriation was like a hundred and three million in twenty twenty three. And we're only looking at forty seven million, um, this, this round, but, uh, still will be throwing our hat up in the mix and see if we can have a, have a successful application of project. Uh, the maximum of any grants would be one point five million. Um, there's no match requirements or anything like that. Uh, I am looking at our twenty twenty seven County Road five concrete rehab project as a potential candidate for, for a grant. Uh, this would be continuation of what we did in twenty twenty four with the rehab. And then twenty twenty five, this year we had the federally dollars to pave the shoulders up there. Twenty twenty seven, a program for the next, uh, five miles or so, County Road five up to County Road three for rehab. And then twenty twenty eight, we have federally dollars for shoulder paving on that side. So it just kind of feels like this would be a good candidate to see some L R dollars come in. Um, and as part of that, I need resolution of support from the board and essentially also saying that, you know, we'll fund anything that the grant doesn't. All eligible costs such as engine, by way, which should not have any right to do that. Unless that is part of the resolution.
And I would guess that that is the purpose for the resolution is to make sure that we are, board is in line with thing for the
Yes, so both your support of the project and acknowledging what costs would be on top of the grounds.
Yeah, sure. I'm going to look for a motion on Resolution twenty twenty five dash forty one.
I would need that motion.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Alter, second by Commissioner Hardey to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash forty one, local road improvement program grant solicitation. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Twenty twenty five dash forty two, Operation Green Light.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I'll handle this one on the Department of Veterans Services office. He's meeting with clients presently, so I'll walk through this, but I see this more intact. So of course, this is the fifth year that NACO has supported a nationwide effort of Operation Green Light and has encouraged all counties. And to the body extension, some municipalities get on board with the effort as well too. But really the bottom line is it's an effort to recognize and support veterans in our community. This is something that Waseca County has participated in since its inception. Uh, and I would certainly like to continue that trend as I feel it is important to, to highlight uh, some of the, the efforts that are, are being done through, uh, the recognition being brought to this process. I won't read through that entire summarization. Uh, obviously you've had a chance to see that and, and look at some of the statistical analysis that surrounds this effort. Uh, what I'm going to do, Mr. Chair, the U D appropriates is read through this proclamation as it covers some of the same, which is in the body form of a resolution, of course, too, but to if you're able to, I'll simply read that out for target.
Yeah, the resolution itself.
Yeah, yes. Okay, thanks. Uh, whereas the board commissioner, staff and residents of Waseca County have great respect, admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who have served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Waseca County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran services officers in twenty and by functioning as county veteran services officers in twenty-nine states to help fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion in federal health, disability and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during the first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of the Counties encourages all counties, parishes and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Wasika County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore be it resolved with designation as Green Light for Veterans, Veterans County, Wasika County hereby declares November fourth through the eleventh, twenty-two-five, as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of those transitioned back to service. And be a further result that the Wasika County will light up the courthouse green during November fourth through eleventh, twenty-two-five, to bring further recognition to the importance of this nationwide effort. Be a further result that Wasika County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made insufferable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November fourth through the eleventh, twenty-two-five. So, Mr. Chair, with that in mind and in front of you, I would turn it back to you for further conversational action.
Okay, thank you. And, um, I would look for a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash forty-two. So we'll, we're seconding breath. Moving seconded to approve Resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-two, Operation Green Light for Veterans, twenty-two-five. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We would look now to Resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-three, Support to Repeal the Moratorium on Nuclear Energy Production in Minnesota. We have that one also.
Yeah, sounds great. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, again. And this, uh, likely is something that you've heard about in some of your fall policy conference meetings over the last couple of months. It is a particular effort that has been proliferated by Sherman Bounty. Um, and to date, all but one county that I'm aware of has been supports of repealing this. Um, many, many other counties have this on their agenda today. Uh, it already passed at the end of October or will have it next week. Uh, there is a significant amount of discussion around this and, and really it is summarized by stating that Minnesota is the only state in the nation that has an outright ban on construction of new nuclear power generation. And that is being sought to be changed by, uh, the Minnesota Nuclear Energy Alliance. So really, all this seeks to do is add support for the repeal of the statutory language that restricts and outright bans, uh, that further development. I believe there is certainly some economic development implication here. Um, the dovetail of this and there's some, you know, handouts and, and takeaways in your packet as well too, that explain this maybe in better or more succinct detail. Um, but ultimately, the, the takeaway or the dovetail of this is Minnesota also passed legislation, as you see up at the top here, in twenty-two-three, that says we're going to be a hundred percent carbon free by twenty-fourty. We know that that can happen uh, with our current infrastructure. It can't happen solely on the back of solar energy production and urban energy production. So in, in a way, it kind of uses that legislation as the impetus of support for uh, repeal of this ban on nuclear energy production. As you're likely aware, we currently have two nuclear producing facilities in the state. This in and of itself, or repeal of this wouldn't guarantee anymore, but it at least provides the option for investments, um, in, in this much needed, I would argue, uh, generative service. Uh, some of the statistical analysis, as I said, is somewhat interesting and dispels some of the, the narrative of the maybe unsafe venture or the what we think in our minds, the large amount of waste or byproduct that really isn't. Um, so it's, it's helpful just to understand, like, the, the used nuclear fuel from one person's entire lifetime would fit into the size of a ballast podcast. All spent fuel from the U.S. nuclear reactor since the nineteen-fifties, which turned into a single football stadium that got less than ten yards. So when you compare that even to our wind or solar or coal, it's really not comparable. So, uh, it's, it's, I wasn't actually aware before this effort that Minnesota was the only state that had just an outright ban. So that was interesting. Um, but many, many of your colleagues and peers feel that that should not be the case. So this is simply, uh, an effort to add our voice to that larger majority presently that is pushing forward legislation in twenty-two-six to look for repeal of the ban on nuclear energy production in the state of Minnesota. So that is what the Resolution twenty-two-five forty-three will for you seems to do. So I have to entertain any additional questions? As I look for consideration of the rest.
This, uh, was, um, brought forward at the Environmental Committee, the AMC Ball Conference. And, uh, yeah, a lot of these statistics were uh, put in front of us along with, uh, the fact that even, even if this gets lifted, we're probably, you know, we're ten years away from, yeah, a nuclear, another plant that takes that much prep work to, to do anything. Uh, they wanted us to put it on our priority. It is going to be on our priorities, but not, uh, priorities that are going to come forward.
It's going to be a nuclear project.
Yes, there you go. Uh, but I was, do you know which county is not in favor? Dr. Paul.
Okay. It has, it was, I should clarify, this has just been in conversation. Their board has not taken specific action saying that we're not in favor of this is getting administrative conversation.
Okay. Cause, uh, there is significant water use, you know, so, yeah, one question I know at, at the Ball Conference was, uh, does it have to be on a water plant, you know, a plant? You know, a river where water access. Can't remember if that was fully explained, you know, it would take quite a aquifer to it, it depending on the size of the plant, I would imagine. So that was one concern, but that is the paper thing that would all get uh, the environmental specialists will take care of. But we got it. We got to start investigating that because in my opinion, that is the only way we're going to fulfill our needs, carbon free in the future. I would be in support of it. Commissioner Harkett, did you have a question?
Well, this, this moratorium has been in place for thirty years, so we don't know if there'll be any new construction on this or how far out it is. But with that being said, you know, was solar wind really ever the answer for carbon free? So here we sit. Thirty years down the road. And then what? Do we still keep okaying solar in the county? Or wind generators or? Well, what are we doing that's color active?
Interesting discussion. Um, and, um, it, it makes perfect sense to, to urge the repeal of this moratorium. Um, we have to be, we have to be open to all the tools, to be using all the tools in the toolbox and, um, the fact that, that Minnesota as a state has said, we're not even going to look at this tool. That's why we have permitting processes. How much stuff has come across all of our emails and desks in recent days about data centers and about all kinds of new things that are changing the way the world works and, um, and, and we've got to figure out whether those are, are good for right here in our little corner of the world. And there is permitting. If the, if this is repealed, there will be a very stringent permitting process. Um, and I would say we want to look holistically. Commissioner Harkett, when you're talking about wind and solar, um, it's obvious they aren't the whole answer. Um, but we also want to remember that, that, um, we have property owners who have, who have invested in that because it gives them another stream of income and a different stream that comes every year, whether the crop fails or not. Um, and, and we've permitted those things, at least thus far, because we want our, our property owners to have choices and to have, and to be able to, to make decisions about how they use their property um, within certain limits. And I think we need to keep having those discussions and, and and reexamine them from time to time. But, um, this, ten years down the road, this is a long ways from being a real thing, even if they repealed it this next session. And so we have to, we have to keep on keeping on and trying to stay informed about all the different possibilities out there. And then pay attention to what our constituents, um, are thinking and want and how we can best use the resources of Wasika County to benefit our home residents.
I, I think it's interesting with, with it, you know, you said the, the revenue stream. I have, I understand that, but you know, when we're taking good crop land out.
Absolutely.
For solar and wind. Because maybe that individual's looking at the bottom line or what have you on that. It's, it's still always comes full circle every quarter century, every twenty-five years. You know, we don't, you can go out to Colorado where they have natural gas and coal. You don't see windmills or solar. You know, it's going to be the demographics of an area that drives this. And yeah, I understand that after years of research, nuclear is going to be less of a hazardous waste issue going forward. So I'm just thinking about, you know, the decommissioning that's going to happen with these that we're twenty-five years in.
Yeah, I, you know, I think, in my opinion, you know, solar and wind always was started as a supplement. I don't, you know, and, and it all was driven by the government subsidies, you know, and, and the requirements for XL to have so much carbon free. So there, it's being driven that way. Uh, now, you know, like you said, fifteen, twenty years down the road, now they're talking about carbon free, not just thirty percent less carbon or something like that. And, and in order to get there, um, you're right, it, it's not going to happen with air or wind and solar.
Anyway, uh, we'll, we'll start to see a natural decline in solar requests just because the credits will fix up. So we're, we're seeing a, a result of Inflation Reduction Jobs Act. We got that on order, doesn't matter. In twenty-two-two, which is a ten-year credit, thirty percent federally, Minnesota coupled that with a thirty percent credit on income tax. So it's kind of, that one is primarily expiring this year. So we'll start to see a bit of a decline, um, just because the incentives aren't there. So most of these individuals that even the ones that are converting crop lines, they're not initiatives that they are taking necessarily. They're being marketed to because these larger companies, so we can get some huge credits, both federally and statewide now in Minnesota. So they're trying to maximize the, the credits that they have. So over time, we will see a decline just because the credits will, so. Minnesota has a production tax as well, so that's where historically counties have been a little bit more steep. Cause right now, anything over a megawatt, granted it is a lot, you're getting a dollar twenty cents per megawatt hour that's generated annually. So eighty percent of that is repaid by county, the other twenty percent get distributed to the township. Which is why you see a lot of requests for one megawatt gardens and a lot of megawatt gardens. I've talked to a larger ones recently. So it's, it's a weird time right now for solar and wind. I would certainly have some concerns of the reclamation and remediation costs in the future too, which is, you know, why we uh, require our companies to escrow the amount that we do as we all kind of up across the state see that writing on the wall that the, the cost of cleanup is going to be a lot bigger maybe than the, the benefit generating this power over its lifetime. So.
I remember watching an episode of Wasika. And they're, they're making small modular reactors where they can build them in factories and ship them out. And that's going to be, I think, our main process in nuclear energy. So, you know, get out a small little nuclear place that just runs Wasika. You know, instead of the big, uh, like you see, super high. Directly head stuff. So I think the, the, the benefits of growing nuclear is going to benefit the whole society. I think it's just going to get smaller and better as we.
Which is both amazing and terrifying.
Yes, and, okay, that's, that's good. You have people that would use it to, you know, for bad things, but.
And it's all going to be rock.
I would imagine these systems are, would be, uh, purchased or, or by the city, right? City run or whatever it means, XL run.
Yeah, who knows? You know, if the city wants to purchase them, they, they're all.
Right, and then. Yeah, that'll be interesting, but.
And, and we're still talking about the old technology here too, where in reality, over the next ten years, nuclear fission conversation will be much larger in scope. This is seventy-year-old technology really that we're talking about that is still sustainable and safely being operated. But it hails in comparison to the advanced, uh, with the division role available as well.
Make the motion. Is there a second?
There is, by Crosby.
Moving seconded to approve Resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-three, urging repeal of Minnesota's moratorium on nuclear energy production. So any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we move on to, we have some policies. County administration policies, Resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-five. Melissa?
I think I'll talk through it, Mr. Chair. Okay, she can add some color commentary if needed, or if I, you know, get really off course somewhere here, but, uh, I'll give you like kind of a broad overview where we are. The, the Labor Committee, which also couples as our policy committee, has heard about this, maybe more than the rest of you. Uh, but you all heard about it a little bit. And what I mean by that is just the overall effort that is going into rewriting, updating, standardizing, informing templates and language, every policy we have in the county. Uh, the major lines of separations between those, that large group of policies are uh, board administrative policies versus administrative policies. So that to say that not every policy that we have in the county is going to come before you board approval. Uh, the ones really that have a public facing purpose that affects the general public, that affects the, the county business as a whole, certainly. Uh, but I just want to give that caveat and clarification. Melissa's been putting in a vast amount of effort in this over the last several weeks and probably months, I guess, at this point. But our hope is to bring several groups of these to you by year end. And if we need to pause and back up along the way, we can do so, but that's why they sent to you a little bit ahead of time. The three that pertain to this particular resolution, as you see, deal with subcommittee structure and citizen citizen appointments. This is something that you typically handle your first meeting of the year. And you'll do so again. We have a few open appointments, a few terminals that need to be done, but this seeks to capture really what it says, your own subcommittee structure that you're assigned to. And then the various other boards, such as your Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, your EA Board, all of those other citizen appointed boards that maintain and that you oversee advantage. Just giving some some language and guidance for how those works. Gift acceptance, really standard. You see these several times throughout the year. Anyone makes a donation to the county for really any intensive purchase, whether it's five dollars or five million dollars, we haven't seen that yet. The the Minnesota statute dictates that we have to buy resolution acceptance. So that's just, again, covering here's protocol. Listing out the statutory or the authority that dictates why we do what we do in some cases, if it exists, either in statute and precedent or whatever may be making process. And then enacting county ordinances. The one thing I'll mention on this one that I'm really seeking approval somewhat in substantially the form provided is because we added a little bit of language in there in the definitions to include Unified Development Code. We have the comprehensive plan, so it made sense from a planning zoning standpoint to also call out the Unified Development Code specifically. Just so you know, very, very minor tweaks in that. Happening nothing really within the body of the policy itself. But just in that very first top of the page, the top of the first page, I'm I developed code. Yes, so as you see in this last paragraph, ultimately trying to add some consistency and provide clear direction to the board and staff alike as we continue to go through this. So Melissa's done while I'm trying to engage with department heads and soliciting feedback through all of these policy groupings, you know, over in in the overall administrative section, if you will, there are many more than just these few that that you're seeing. I guess I skipped one of those, you're a romantic, but yeah, thank you. But ultimately, that is just the really simple, here's how we revise great policies. So that one's important because it kind of is the foundation for everything. So again, just if if we do it, if if we expect it, if we expect our staff to do it, we're trying to in some way, shape or form cover it within the body of a policy. Which is why ultimately we're not bringing every single one to you, because that would be a lot and it doesn't really pertain to the in that minutia of what you would get involved in on a daily basis, but they're always available. So if there are any questions on this ahead of time, happy to try to address that, otherwise I'd look for for consideration of twenty twenty four dash forty five to get this first group of four administrative policies approved.
I would move twenty five, twenty twenty five dash forty five resolution.
Second. Second, second. Move back Commissioner Multer, second back Commissioner Krausey. To approve adoption of twenty twenty five dash forty five, which on the actual resolution, it says twenty four dash forty five.
Yes, it is twenty twenty five dash forty five. Okay, thank you.
I just caught it here and I thought, heck, is okay, so that is any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All the poll same sign, she cares.
Thank you. So just a further compliment that Commissioners, so all of your board approved policies, we will have a landing spot on the website. That entails something else as well too. So the ones that were true of public facing, there will be a landing spot out there as well too. So just to clarify that. Thanks.
And that takes us to the end of the action items. So we'll move into administration. Administration update.
Okay, so a few things to put before you today. Maybe chief among them, just getting some clarification on a legislative luncheon I've been trying to put together. I had a couple of conflicts with delegates on the eighteenth. As I was running into those conflicts and chatting with some of other counties and how they approached this, I had a little bit more of an interest in separating it from informal board meeting practice to be a little bit more intentional in the conversation when we ask our delegates to come. Taking just a simple luncheon type event that gives ample time to discuss with them. Here are some of our own policy priorities, legislative priorities going into twenty twenty six, but also gives each of them sufficient time to communicate back to you what their priorities are, coming off of twenty twenty five and going into twenty twenty six. So I'm trying to target the nineteenth or twentieth of this month. And then looking to just for some real time nos or yays as far as your ability, roughly an eleventh to one timeframe of that particular day.
Okay.
The nineteenth or the twentieth, which would be Wednesday, Thursday.
Of
November.
November.
Thursday is that green scene coming here. It's more so the red day of plant, would that mean that possibly they would be in town anyway? That is possible.
Wait, I am, are we going to tell them the twenty? Nineteenth would be a good date.
Anyone opposed to the nineteenth? Other than scheduled, principle. Okay, I'm going to move forward with that date unless I hear something differently. And if I run into a roadblock, I'll I'll let you know, assuming that's one that's going to work for state. You'll have an email in your inbox about the Capital Investment Committee coming to town tomorrow. The chamber sent that out and is looking for anyone that is available to come out and support that effort. Certainly, I mean, there's a number of clean water projects that are on the dockets and looking for some additional funding for both water tower and indoor water and sewer infrastructure in the city of La Ciga. Two forty five tomorrow at Clear Lake Park. Anyone that is available to go, we'll add it to the board calendar regardless, so you can certainly do so. And I'll definitely be able to find that's already without asking further, but if you're available to do so, that'd be great. We talked about interest rates a little before, you know, as as predicted, the Fed made their second of six planned reductions. Lowering another twenty five basis points. Highly enough, the response in our seven day yields was to increase five basis points. So we are starting to see a little bit of the longer term net rate of returns creeping down a little bit into the three point seven five ish range, which is what the Fed is modeled right now, between three point seven five and four. So our seven day yields went up from four point one oh to four point one five, which is great in the short term. Start to see some of that anticipation. And so anticipation on the back end. It's going to be terms to your sixty five, et cetera. Got some good news about WIC this morning. It will for sure be funded through the month of November. MDH had committed to, well, I should say USDA had indicated via letter to MDH, some additional pots of funding, which was actually larger than the last type, and that came through. So it will, in the state, for sure be funded through November. Not so much the case for SNAP, as we continue to see some some battling back and forth with delegates there at the federal level, with not necessarily a conclusion in sight. USDA had cited above four point six five billion dollars of contingency funding, which must be nice to have, but on day thirty five now of our shutdown, there isn't a solution. The problem with their contingency funding right now, it takes about eight million dollars to run that program a month. And what they're stating with four point six five is it'll actually take longer for us to rewrite the program to apportion this out at the lower rates and essentially will be worth it. So they're they're citing essentially it'll take weeks, if not a month or two to reprogram the system to accommodate the lower amount. So all that to say, it's not a great picture for the month of November. So even if I think the expectation should be that even if a deal was made today, if if it was not for the exact amount that's saving the system right now, there is still a weeks, if not month ish, implication of time where those cards would be distributed or funded. So that should be our expectation that November is kind of a lost cause at this point, no matter what happens in what time. We haven't, at least I haven't, I shouldn't say we haven't, you may have sent it, said, but we haven't heard anything else recently from our food shelf. We knew that that was in our review from a couple of meetings ago, that hey, we may somewhat be on call to step in and try to further support as needed. Sidney gave her presentation with the Neighborhood Service Center a few weeks ago. I've not heard anything else recently. So if if you have different information, please point me that direction. Sarah has been working to put together a collaborative user group locally, going in our faith groups, sort of food shelf type ask service entities. It's more of a local response organism as needed. We haven't seen a a ton of immediate need yet, but I suspect that will change for the next couple of weeks, especially with the the confirmed delay and holdup with SNAP benefits as well. Anything else in that space?
I appreciate the work that is being done to kind of keep fingers on the pulse of that, because I I know of a number of other counties that have already appropriated for local needs, and we will need to stay aware of what those are so we can
Yeah.
figure out what we need to do.
Yeah, absolutely. And I was actually surprised by the number of counties that don't do any appropriation at all annually for the food shelf. But oftentimes that just means it's happening at the at the city level and that how those divisions of labor happen are are different. But there are a number of them in our area that do no appropriations and aren't really in that space at all. So in our corner of the world, it's obviously handled more at the county level than it is at municipal level. So it's something for us to continue to be aware of.
I did ask Larry, Chair, you know, in Maryland, how things were at Food Shelf there, the needs were being filled. If the needs were increasing yet from the overhaul, there's quite a need, but then he hasn't seen a spike yet. But he he was able to write a grant. And he got ten thousand dollars coming for supplies. And must have, which was super. Okay, so that helped for a lot.
Yeah, definitely. Excellent. Quick building updates, November fourteenth is kind of our next milestone. We'll go through revision of cost estimates with AP based upon schematic design. They've still been working with individual departments almost daily, having conversations, really solidifying, here's what the plans look like, are are going to look like. So they can get absolutely as close as they can in cost estimates as possible. On that, in, I guess, in that same line of thinking, I've been writing a narrative for local option sales tax. Basically walked through the history, the need citing the major benefits of that legislation that comes to pass and then culminating in a valid question, November of twenty twenty six. Assuming it has that supportive legislation. I would certainly want this to be a part of a private conversation with the delegates that they're, when they're here, if you folks are in favor of it. I haven't, at this point, asked for a specific resolution. But that is ultimately what we would need to see. I don't think we would need to see it before January. But if there is discomfort with even moving in that direction, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time and effort and especially convey that to her, definitely it's not going anywhere. So as I told you, I think the last couple of times, I continue to operate under the assumption that this is a direction you want to go. And until you tell me otherwise, I will continue with that direction. With anticipation of all of those things hitting the ground, running quickly in January twenty twenty six. I had a note in here just to check in with the P and Z Subcommittee quickly, now that Harvest is wrapping up. Oh, I think we have a number of things that we could touch base on. So we just can find a time to to do that and get together with the P and Z Subcommittee. Maybe we can work on that. Other budget items, not a ton has changed. We did get renewal of our OJP grants through community corrections. If you recall, you took action a few months ago to fund that position in twenty twenty six, which is that shared drug court position with Steel in anticipation of it not being renewed. It was renewed. So we'll see Mr. Sheeran in your future with the revision of that grant approval, which ultimately means about a forty six thousand, forty four thousand and change dollar reduction to the budget twenty twenty six. So it's good. License Bureau updates, just do this, you know, every couple of months, just so you're aware of the happenings in that space. Gene does a great job in tracking the information and data, just compared to, you know, the same time last year through ten months, we're about two hundred transactions above. And it's only about twelve hundred dollars of revenue above, so for that, it's a teensensitive transaction that we're gaining for what's going. Obviously, different transactions take different lots of time, so you can see additional breakdowns of exactly what those are and all of those major categories as well, which is just something I look at monthly is figure out what some of those trends are that are happening. You know, this, this is something that we feared a couple of years ago that was really going to get pushed heavily to a digital option, virtual option, online whole process. Not really seeing that yet in in at least a material way or in in a way that's impacting us from a dollars and cents standpoint. As I stated, we're about twelve hundred dollars ahead in revenue that were last year through ten months, so just not seeing that pinch yet. At some point, I suspect that will be the case, but also at some point, we would hope that they will entertain some revision of driver's license fee restructuring, because it's been a long, long time since that has happened. Of all of the dollars and cents we collect, we retain about five percent of them, as I've shared with you dismally in the past. So of that five point one million dollars, for example, that our staff now transacted, we've kept two hundred and eighty thousand dollars over the course of twenty nine thousand transactions. Just a quick touch point there. Probably only need to do now. Anything else for me?
Go through that last one or do
Oh, it's Reggie?
Yeah.
Yeah, just one second.
Twenty twenty four was three hundred and thirty seven thousand fees. We're at two hundred and eighty five. Two hundred and eighty five for ten months.
Almost two.
Yeah, there you go. So yeah, we're over, we're above uh two hundred and something after ten months from last year. Oh, yeah, there.
You're just trying to project that at the end of the year percent. Uh huh. You're just kind of thinking through the end of the year, projecting where we'll be.
Yeah, even though we're over on transactions, are we gonna be over on one, you know? And like you said, all the paths of those transactions are.
Exactly. I mean, it's it's going to be pretty well on track in terms of budget right now. And could change, but it probably won't. And we have ten some years of history in here. People are creatures of habit for the most part. So, you know, those renewals tend to happen in the same way here over here with any surprises that happen are usually more on the front end of the year, not the back end. It's your whatever certain things are new at certain times, January, March.
Because I think the question would be, or we can use a little care.
See what you wanna get into.
For all that the possibility that we we claim from state, all of that. Yeah, it does offset it.
Oh. Yeah, it does. Uh so it's gotten better the last, there there was somewhat of a legislative win in twenty twenty three that increased our revenues in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. So the picture has gotten better, but I, you know, I was really blunt with you three or four years ago in this topic that the License Bureau doesn't fund itself. It's not a self sustaining model and it never will be, but it is a public service. And it is a very well received public service in the community to the extent that many, many individuals from not in our community take the time to come here to get service here. There's a lot of them in terms of those total transactions that are not residents of Waseca County that come to Waseca County to work with our staff and our License Bureau because they know what to expect in terms of the service that they get. But it it all comes with the reality, like anything else, you decide in terms of discretionary spending, you're investing in the product, it serves.
And do we know one among the people members are from Steel and North Manfield or you got privately held? You know, I I think that would be their staffing, you know, I I don't think they could compete privately.
I can, I can see how granular we can get that data on the transactional level. We have a a really good way to tie it back to address payers of code.
It's a interesting. Yeah, it's a, it's a it's a service that we provide. And there are many people that come here that that receive. But you know, it it's a lot like South Country Health lines, you know, we increase our membership, great. But if we're losing money per member on P M A because the rates haven't been high enough. Then and it's kind of the same thing with with the License Bureau. I too agree that it's we're talked about as one of the better service License Bureau's area.
Here we are.
Area, um which is good, but it would be nice to at least know that every transactional matter covering that loss and making some money, you know, to help it sustain itself. But so it's it's continually not be a legislative priority.
And that was gonna be my comment. That's one of the reasons why this, these fees are a point in the AMC uh legislative platform and that we need to stay engaged there and and keep having those discussions because the state, it's it's always a negotiation with the state. Um what we do compared to what it reimburs us in a lot of different areas. And and this is one of them. And I'm always proud to hear of the good service that people get in in a, when they come to our little corner of the world. Um but nothing from nothing leaves nothing.
Yeah. So just, you know, perspective on our revenues in twenty twenty four, we had a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget. We actually collected a little more than three hundred and ten thousand dollars. So even the costs, the realistic costs have been offset the last few years. Like in twenty twenty four, at the end of the year, it only costs us about fifteen thousand dollars to run the License Bureau. Well, it's just cheap.
Right.
Right. So what for what the benefit it is, it's cheap. In twenty twenty five, our total revenue budget, that's drivers and license, that's boats, that's A T Vs, that's snowmobiles, that's everything. It's about three hundred thousand dollars total, of which we've already collected two eighty five nine through ten months. So we will be certain over above budget by by a good margin. So i ideally we still be in the thirty ish to forty thousand dollar total cost all in twenty twenty five, even if it's significant season insurance and things that we realized this year.
We get advertised to do that.
Did we add? Oh, no, we're not actively marketing to say come to our life order. We just do that.
That's where the staff.
We're ready. Stop here.
But the staff do a tremendous job and obviously people know that and it's pure about it and it's even tested as well. So there it will never be an issue of not meeting their revenue targets or goals because it never has been in any of these years. Um uh some of those other uncontrolled things, insurance, et cetera, certainly out there. Go ahead.
Um uh I'm thinking how much of this this year in particular is driven by the change in licenses for driver's license? I'd be interested if there if there's any data on that because this was the year where if you wanna fly, you had if the date changed, you had to have the new enhanced driver's license.
Yeah, in in May of this year.
Yeah. So I'm kind of curious about that.
But just quickly in real time, you know, Jean April had a bit of a spike compared to last year. You had two hundred and fifty more driver's license transactions in April this year than April of last year. I'm sure that was motivated by real ID to an extent. Uh again, people are typically creatures of habit and we can tell the due date and go take care of it.
And it's more expensive, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the between Sarah. See that number up there? By eighty nine seventy two million. Total. Or two twelve hundred. So April and May of last year compared to this.
Interesting.
I'd like to go back to talk about the Neighborhood Service Center. Uh we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago and it was brought to my attention to ask. And I want to verify before I figure that if the if the Neighborhood Service Center, if we get to appropriations. Construction has really hurt them. And they're it's all just fun to be great to have or the rest of the food is down channel one, you know, top giving eating food for them as well has been hurt as well. On this way, they've been having to purchase a lot of them. At a discounted rate.
It's sad to take over action. Typically, we we approve second half appropriations in summer. So following that same line of thought, we could expedite that to the eighteenth at least. Unless you would like to do something outside of that. You want to.
It would take a special meeting then.
Yes, um uh I will, I guess, just kind of cite that we do it by board action. Not because it hasn't already been approved, because it has, we've already approved that budget, we've already approved the appropriations by resolution. It doesn't require you to come back in resolution. We just do that in terms of transparency and make it visible to you that hey, we're doing this. Remember all of these organizations that you support. That's just how we've done it. Um if you want to direct staff to expedite that, we can do that without further board action in my estimation.
Would like to see that. Do you have any reservations on the?
I'm good. All right, we'll take her.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Uh you got an H R update in front of you. Um any questions on that? So uh Tina did send you a economic development update just this morning.
Thank you. Awesome.
Um so that that's in Mary's box. She's got a ton of stuff going on right now, uh both in the P and Z world, economic development world, uh collaborations with every city in the county. Um so a lot, a lot going on. She's staying busy, which is good. Um any questions on either of those right up?
I would just the only one in the room to note was Commissioner Drowsy. Six years. At all. Ten minutes.
Yeah, ten minutes.
Just getting started. I'm just finally learning.
I think that's all.
We're down to the theme right. Sources announcements, we would go onto missionary reports. What they were going back to is just two weeks, two weeks. Whatever that was, on the order of twenty first, twenty first, yeah. Uh the twenty third, we have a work session. And board meeting at nine thirty, I think that's down. Uh Wednesday, the twenty second was our district meeting at Indian Island. The wine or me. And Commissioner Walter was charged that day. She did a wonderful, undoubtedly so. She did a wonderful job. Snacks were good. Um so very good meeting that day. Uh then we got to then I went back to field work. Uh on Monday, the twenty seventh, we had market met up by Walmart for the marketplace uh groundbreaking. Yes. Yeah. So it was a short, short week for me. Not really a short week for me, but on commis side, then versus to a work session today. So um and then tomorrow there's a potluck at the Corales Park. Is that correct? Then all courthouse, court house. How to get Mark in there. Okay.
It's a scam. It's a scam.
Blue staff, potluck. The new staffs and those Republican ones are committee meatballs.
Commissioner Walter. We're bringing the shits in.
Um on the twenty first, we had a board meeting, we had a uh building subcommittee uh touch points and then uh Min Prairie Joint Powers Board meeting. On the twenty second, we were out at Minin' Winery uh for AMC District Seventeen. Um it, I thought it went pretty well. Um I'm gonna call out that that Little Seaky Cooney contributed. Um one of our businesses was provided the food, identity catering, did a great job of food that day. Um on the twenty third, I had a Shaq retreat planning committee wrap up meeting. I met with Sarah to talk about uh local public health. Oh, what's happening in in public health, both locally and bigger picture? And um and that evening, there was treats on the streets. I didn't make it here, but I know that it was fun. I saw pictures in the paper. On the twenty fourth, uh One Watership One Plan, they saw a river meeting was here in the East End. And um that went well. Two to twenty seven was the groundbreaking for Marketplace Apartments. That was fun to be part of. Twenty ninth, we have a um Hazard Mitigation Meeting Online. As part of the process, we're doing to put together our newest Hazard Mitigation Plan, which has to be done every five years. And Denise is doing a good job walking us through that. Thirty, I met with I S Stagman in the morning to talk about Food Shelf. Then I went up to S Rock. We had um Waseca Forward, uh an in person meeting linking assets to actions. And we made some progress there on on our on our workforce development work that we're doing there in conjunction with our new Workforce Development uh center. Then I attended the drug plant graduation at that afternoon and that was awesome. We had a Waseca twenty person graduating campus. It was nice to be there. Good to see somebody get in a new life. Um and yesterday um I had a chat, L B H A data and law organization book. In the morning, a joint leadership team for public health met virtually in the afternoon. And here we are today.
Thank you, Commissioner Bergen. Uh Tuesday, the twenty first, I met with the sheriff at eight A M. Nine thirty was board, one P M was building committee. Wednesday, the twenty second, A N C District Seven meeting with Commissioner Walter in the Winery. That's me just to today. Uh Wednesday, we had a board meeting. Twenty second, we are at our AMC District. Commissioner Walter handling the chair. I had later that day, we got Seaky Foundation meeting. Uh the twenty third, I had a treat on the street. We went through a pile of candy and even had to send Melissa one more time. We'll get some more here. There was, there was a lot to be handed up that night. It was, it was good. Uh on the twenty fifth, I had the Arts Council fundraiser. I had coffee with the commissioner. Twenty seventh, I we had the groundbreaking of the marketplace. Wednesday, the twenty ninth, I was online with the Hazard of Mitigation. Friday, the thirty first, I did Board of Appeals and Equalization Training for Tammy. There you go. Um brings us to Monday. I had Arts Council meeting and today we had work session, board meeting and the project meetings.
May I make a comment?
Yeah.
In my twenty years here, we have never had all five commissioners certified. We meet this year in addition to myself and Mary Jo. So we have perfect, beyond perfect issues. Well done, Mary.
All right. As far as myself, it's pretty light also. Uh the twenty first was Min Prairie after our board meeting. On the twenty seventh, those the marketplace groundbreaking. Thirty first, I had a pre Joint Powers Board Scott meeting, Zoom with Liotta. Then I've got a couple of months left of charity. Then I've got a couple of months left of carrying out the words. That and that brings us to today. Anything else needs to come before the board? I would. Where are you?